Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, January 8th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Okay, trustee Luizy.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
And Mayor Eklund.
And I am here tonight, and it looks like we're falling victim to the illnesses of the time, which I'm sick too, so these guys will be sick for next month, so. First thing we're gonna do tonight is, I have an appointment to make, which is the appointment authorizing the appointment of Brian S. Madden to police officer effective January 8, 2018, with a 78-week probationary period commencing on the effective date. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
Very much in favor, and at this point, I'm gonna ask Brian to come on up. He's here with his mom and dad, Raquel and George. And let's see, let's, okay. So if you would please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Brian Madden.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Well, that's always a nice way to start off a meeting. Brian, welcome. We had some, I just wanna say, we had some very qualified candidates, and we were very glad that you threw your hat in the ring for this position. I know today was your first day at the academy. We wish you all the best. You're gonna make a fine addition to our department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna say a word? Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, it's just, we're very proud to add Brian to our ranks. As you said, it was a very lengthy and sometimes difficult selection process. It was certainly, he was amongst very, very qualified candidates, and for him to rise above is certainly a tribute to him. Brian's recently graduated from college at SUNY Cortland. He is very energetic, and he was a resident of Tuckahoe. He's a graduate of Tuckahoe School System. He's also a graduate of our Explorer Program. So he's a former explorer where he hopefully gained his passion for law enforcement. And we're very, very proud to have him amongst us. We're gonna wish him well, today was his first day at the academy. I'm very glad that he didn't have to do any extra push-ups or any extra running today because something either we left out or he forgot, so. That's always a good day, starting out, and I'm sure he suffered the consequences of some others in the class that didn't do so well, but we're glad and we're very confident that he's going to do well in the academy and is gonna be a great addition to our force. So, thank you.
Well, we're certainly looking forward to it. He looks great in great shape for somebody who's spent his first day there, so. Anybody else have anything to say? Any of the colleagues on the board?
I'd like to just say, you're entering a career in a time where what you're gonna be doing is more important than ever before. And you have the tools already. As a young man, you've come forward to us with a sense of maturity and understanding of the ways of the world. And I know that the training that takes place up in the academy will really put you on the path, and of course, the crew here, the staff here in the department is second to none, and they are surely gonna bring you along. So congratulations, and one thing I always say is never lose your sense of humanity. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo my colleague's sentiments, congratulations. You know, it's a wonderful thing, certainly, when we bring on good people to our police force, and we've done that, and I'm very, very proud of that. But it's even more special when we get to do it from someone who has been, you know, who lives in the community, who's raised in the community, like yourself. So that's even more special, so I'm very, very proud to have you on. And remember, you always gotta speak to me in Spanish, so, 'cause I need to practice. Necesito practicar, sí?
Okay, gracias.
Well, that's great. So, would you like to say a word or two?
Sure.
Don't forget to thank your mom now.
I just wanna take this opportunity to thank the chief, Chief Costanza, Mayor Eklund, and the rest of the village board for selecting me to be Tuckahoe's next police recruit. It's a great honor and it really means the world to me that I have all the confidence and support of you guys. I also wanna thank Sergeant Batista and also Detective Pinto. They were an excellent help throughout the entire hiring process, and they really helped me out. It was a long, long process, being that I went to school four hours away, but they did everything they could to help me out. Last but not least, I wanna thank my mother and father for their continued love and support and guidance. I wouldn't be where I am today without them, so, thank you, guys. Well, I, I know that Tuckahoe is renowned for their police professionalism, and I'm gonna do everything I can to uphold that standard and really make you guys proud over the next few months. Thank you.
We have confidence that you will. Thank you. All right, maybe we'll just take a break for a minute. I'm sure the family wants to go out and celebrate tonight, and congratulations to both you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Hasta la vista.
All right, moving on, we have no presentations or public hearings tonight. That's gonna bring us to adoption of the minutes. The approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11, 2017. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
In favor. That gives us the first opportunity to address the board on anything on our agenda tonight. Yes, sir? Just give us your name, address, and the floor is yours.
Albert Stern, 14 Westview Avenue. In October, a few months ago, I asked you, Mayor Eklund, to find out why the tax certuraries are so much higher here than they are almost anywhere else. And you mentioned that you were gonna speak to some of the Eastchester people to find out why. For example, Eastchester is three times the size of Tuckahoe, yet the certuraries are less. And did mention that there should be a reval, there could be a revaluation, and I just wondered what you've come up with.
Actually, we talked about this at our last month's meeting. After you had brought that up at a meeting, or maybe two meetings prior, we met at a work session, we actually thought you were gonna be there. We met at a work session with our assessor and our new tax cert attorney. And so we had quite a lengthy discussion about it, about these issues that, some that you had talked about, some that are issues that we've been talking about for a long time, which is, you know, our tax certiary payments, our assessed valuation in the village compared to the town, compared to municipality that has a current, who has done a current revale. And, you know, the answer that we ended up, that we got is a similar answer that we've received in the past, which is unless the village is gonna go ahead and put the money and time and money into a total revale, which really should be done on a townwide basis, the situation is really not gonna change, with the exception of it has changed. And it's changed because our ratables have stabilized, and they've stabilized because the economy's better, because we are a much more desirable municipality. Even the Times just wrote an article this past weekend about that, so that...
Well, the reason I'm addressing that is, on your agenda tonight is $36,000 to give to Westies. So far, your budget is $140,000 for certuraries for this year. You're eight months into it, and you're at $327,000. You're more than double what your budget was. And as far as Eastchester is concerned, they haven't done the revaluation. Yet again, their certuraries are less, not a whole lot less, but it's a much bigger area. I went back and I looked at some of the other areas around here, like Scarsdale, Bronxville. Bronxville that did the revaluation.
And Scarsdale did too, by the way.
Yeah, they don't have any certiary, virtually nothing. Bronxville has $16,000, $38,000. Tuckahoe's running $375,000 a year. It would seem to me that it would be, first of all, a good business decision to do the revaluation. I'm surprised it hasn't been done by now, because you're losing... Well, let's just look at numbers here. In the last four years, I don't have the 2017 numbers, but Tuckahoe has given away $1.8 million, and Eastchester has given away $963,000. It's twice as much.
If I could just interrupt you a little bit, the village and the town aren't giving away anything. A tax certiary is actually a reimbursement for the fact that the property had been overtaxed. So it's not that they're giving money away, they're actually, it's a reimbursement.
Anyway, the money is double for Tuckahoe compared to Eastchester. I don't understand it. You say you have the same appraiser, the same attorney, but the only thing I can see is that certain developers around here have gotten a lot of money. Rafiani's gotten $200,000 in the last three years. Riverview Retirement got over $100,000. Westies today gets $36,000. I don't know why Westies would get it. They fill up their storage area pretty well. So, all in all, I think there really is a need to do this because it's like a ship that has a big hole in it, and you haven't plugged it up yet.
Well, and there's a good poss, well, I shouldn't say good possibility, but I'm sure one of the items on our new county executive's agenda's gonna be to taking a look at possibly a county-wide revale, 'cause if the county did it, then all the municipalities wouldn't have to do it. We would all work off the standard assess rule that the county would impose.
Anyway, that's what I've seen here, and I would certainly recommend that you go for a revaluation because this kinda money is not play money, and it's really going out. And again, I don't know why it's more here than the Eastchester, but that's all I really had to say.
Do you realize how much a reevaluation would cost?
Yeah, it's a good deal.
It's a good, and, but even bef-
How much would it cost?
But even before we would do the reevaluation, the primary mover in the reevaluation would have to be the town in order for it to be, for everything to be in line.
So why not?
So until the town initiates this reevaluation process...
What have you done to initiate this to the town?
We've...
No, I'm asking a simple question.
You have, yes. It's something that's been discussed among, I know, council members and members of this board, and it's just one of those things that needs to be looked at.
Do you know how much it took, how much it would cost Tuckahoe to be...
At least a million dollars, if not $2 million.
It was a couple million dollars.
It's not an inexpensive process, and it takes a few years.
Turn on that, it's a high, I don't know if, let's say it's a million and a half. In the last four years, I see, you had one big one for a co-op here. You've given a...
It's not given away.
All right.
It's a reevaluation of the real estate taxes.
$1.8 million, okay? You can look at the numbers, I've looked at them. So compare that, once you get it over with it, once you get over with it, you're through, and you won't have these kinda things. You'll be like Scarsdale, or Bronxville, or some of these upscale communities who've done the work.
But again, either the town has to initiate the process, otherwise...
Well, I hope you can get the town to reevaluate it.
Again, it's something that we'll discuss.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you're welcome to talk to Todd Hutton, too, up in the town. Okay, good. Anybody else wish to address the board on anything on our agenda tonight? Okay, we're gonna move into our agenda items. Resolution number one is authorizing a 2,000 Mack MRU 688S garbage sanitation truck as surplus for sale. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing a tax certiary settlement for 240 Alpine Place Owners Corp. For the assessment years of 2013 to 2017, with a street address of 240 Alpine Place, Section 43, Block 3, Lot 8, in the amount of $2,112.83. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing a tax certiary settlement for Tuckahoe Project LLC for assessment years 2012 to 17, with a street address of 65 Marble Dale Road, Section 35, Block 5, Lot 1, in the amount of $36,269.67. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $594,737.04. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's gonna bring us to our departmental reports of the board, and we're gonna start with our chief of police.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of snow-related announcements. One is to make sure that our residents are aware that they have to remove snow from their sidewalks within four hours after the snow stops falling. Often after major snowstorms like we just experienced, we spend a lot of time knocking on doors and asking people to get their sidewalk shoveled. It's a problem for us particularly because so many of our sidewalks lead to the train stations as high volume of pedestrians using these sidewalks. We don't wanna have slip and fall accidents where people are getting hurt. So just a reminder, again, they have four hours from the time the snow stops to get it done. If it snows overnight, up until 7:00 AM, they have until 11:00 AM to remove it. But it is, would be so helpful, and it's also a liability issue even for the property owners if they don't do that, so it's in everyone's best interest to get it done in a timely fashion. The other thing is, is that what often happens over the course of the years is that we have many complaints of vehicles being left abandoned for long periods of time on several of our streets. And each of those complaints are only answered when some neighbor or complainant calls and identifies a specific car and says, you know, that car across the street from me hasn't moved in over a week, two weeks, three weeks, et cetera. But when we do have a major snowfall like we just experienced, it really highlights how many cars are left for long periods of time. So we generally, the law is 48 hours, you have to, on any public highway. And our village ordinance mimics the state law, so it's exactly, written exactly as a state law that on any public highway, you have to move your car every 48 hours. What we generally do is wait at least double that, 96 hours, before we start enforcing that, which we started to do today. So some of our residents may have received tickets today for leaving their cars abandoned, or twice the legal limit on the street. We warn as many people as we possibly can, but there are some people that will receive summonses. But again, it's the only time as a whole village we could take a look at and see where cars are being left and are not moved. So just a reminder that that 48-hour limit is the law, and that they need to move their cars. And then finally, and I'm sure Frank will be happy that I'm talking about this, is that we do experience people throwing snow out into the street after the DPW has plowed and salted, and it's a big problem because then they have to come out, they create hazardous conditions. DPW has to come out at greater cost to the village, as well as creating some really dangerous situations. So please do not throw snow out into the street. It's important that we keep the houies clear, so. That's my spiel for tonight.
Thank you, chief, thank you very much. Before I bring up Commissioner DeMarco, I have one more resolution. That was a last-minute resolution tonight. This is gonna be resolution number five. It's authorizing the mayor to sign a comprehensive settlement with the estate of Vivian House PNN Tiffany Properties, resolving all claims the village has in connection with the property located at 99 Main Street, Tuckahoe, Section 33, Block 6, Lot 20, for the sum of $49,850. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So I'll tell you what this is. Anyone who's lived in Tuckahoe for any period of time, you've seen the boarded-up building on Main Street. Well, guess what? It's been sold, and the village has almost $50,000 coming to it for money that the village has laid out for engineers and other expenses to secure that property so it wouldn't injure pedestrians on that street. But we're told that within the next couple of months, the new property owner is gonna probably take that plywood out or certainly start working on the facade and the interior and restore that store, which has been a nice store for over 10 years. So, thank goodness.
Trustee Luizy.
Surely in favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
Very much in favor.
Mayor Eklund.
Yes, definitely in favor. That's gonna bring Frank up, he's can talk a little bit about snow.
Yeah, I prefer not to, but, but I, the more I talk about it, I guess the more snow we're getting. But Chief Costanza made my job a little easier tonight. I just wanted to also reiterate that, you know, the sidewalks do need to be kept in maintainable order so we, you know, pedestrian traffic can flow through them. But most importantly is, we have people throwing snow, not only in streets, but more dangerously hills. We have a lot of hills in Tuckahoe, so if you get one resident that throws all their snow into that particular part of the street as a car is heading downhill or even uphill, at nighttime, you don't see these patches of ice, and it becomes a real dangerous situation. So I ask people, most importantly, to please try to contain the snow onto their property or around an area that really won't interfere with anybody else. That's all I really have.
Well, good job out there, your men worked long, long hours, that's for sure.
Guys did a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Camille, anything for us tonight?
No report.
Gary, other than the good news you just handed me?
Good news, Mr. Mayor, and I think that came about around 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah, good.
And again, our goal here was to make the village whole. I think it's a win-win for everybody. Lets the seller move on, lets the new buyer improve the property, gets the village whole, so it's a win-win for us.
It is.
I think that's gonna be a good thing down there.
I know you put you and many other former village attorneys put a lot of time into this, so.
I was talking to Mayor, former Mayor White, who was here before, and that was going on when he was here.
Yeah, that's amazing.
And we're talking about, I didn't have kids at the time, when that started. And my oldest daughter's 15, so.
Wow.
It's been a long time that that's been going on.
That's for sure.
So hopefully you'll see some improvements down there next few months.
David, anything for us tonight?
Wanted to update the board and the public on a very fast approaching project that ConEd is going to be doing on Midland Avenue, actually, starting this Tuesday. We got word last month about this, and we've been working. Today, we had a meeting, the chief was there, Frank DeMarco was there, Bronxville was there, the fire department was there, Bill Williams, Jim Palmer from the Bronxville little minister was there. This is a project where ConEd is going to be replacing a, let me get this right, a 12-inch cast iron gas line from Winter Hill Road all the way down to Library Lane in Bronxville with a 16-inch steel gas line. This is an extensive project within the village of Tuckahoe. From Winter Hill to approximately Avon, it's going to be the first leg of the project. It's gonna take up to three months, three and a half months. It is going to cause some disruption on Midland. There are about 20 homes, approximately 20 homes. A notice will be going out from ConEd to all those homes beginning tomorrow. We will have that notice, we will put it on our website. Lot of the concern that we had is making sure that the parking stays open at night. Some of those residents can park, and we were assured that it would be plated by the end of the night. They will have a stretch that can't be plated, but there'd be parking. They should be able to, parking for those residents up and down in Midland, so we should be able to work with that. But that is going to be pretty an extensive project for the next three months in Tuckahoe. We look at the bright side, after three months, ConEd will come in in the springtime, restore all of Midland Avenue in the village to Avon, fresh pavement, so.
Will they pave curb to curb?
Absolutely. We will insist that they pave curb to curb. So you'll see that in the next, starting next week, there'll be police officers out there. There'll be a lot of action, so again, you know, just ask the public to slow down, you know, make sure they, you know, if the police ask them to stop, slow down, there are a lot of people working, so. That will be a project ongoing in the village for the next few months.
That's a big project, for sure. Thank you. All right, miscellaneous business, our next village board meeting is gonna be on February 5, 2018, and that's gonna bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And tonight, we're gonna start with trustee Luizy.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm gonna start with the Tuckahoe seniors who will have a visit from our very own Tuckahoe mayor, Steve Eklund, on this Thursday. Is it January 11?
No, I think it's Thursday.
Or is it the 18th? Because I have two different dates here.
Oh, it's the 18th.
It's the 18th, okay, so, and the mayor has done this, this is going to be his second appearance. Not a second appearance, but this is a program that Jennifer Vetromile brought to the mayor, that he periodically come down and just speak to the Tuckahoe seniors. It's question and answer period, so I'm sure we're all looking forward to that. So that'll be on Thursday, January 18, at 1 o'clock. And the seniors will also be having another presentation from David Osborne, who is an historian for St. Paul's Church. He will be speaking to the seniors on January 16 about the church. And I have a report here from the Tuckahoe History Committee. This is their 2017 annual report, I will try to condense this as best I can. The History Committee is beginning its 18th year of its mission to uncover, preserve, and share the rich history of Tuckahoe. We worked on 50 Wednesdays from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM during the year 2017 to research, receive, catalog, and index new photos, artifacts, and information, as well as field questions from interesting parties. The History Committee is part of and contributed to the Southern Westchester Historians Group that put together a program showing World War I impact on the home front. They also prevented eight PowerPoint presentations to various community groups and participated in three bus tours. The History Committee continues to offer informal as well as formal presentations at the Mini Marble Museum for individuals and community groups. They also work closely with the Eastchester Historians and assisted with a bus tour for Tuckahoe teachers and another for the Bronxville Women's Club. The open house, which I've spoken about, was held this past October, and again, it was well-attended by residents and other historians from throughout the county. If you check our cable guide, you will see that the, that is being shown on our cable channel. They continue to search the papers and historical documents for Tuckahoe-related material and have still continued to receive articles found in Ireland that were retrieved by a committee member. As I always say, every month, the History Committee is a invaluable source of information to all residents. And they meet here every Wednesday, second floor of Village Hall, and I congratulate them on a great and successful year. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Alfasi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have one item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item, and that is January fifteenth, Martin Luther King Day. We will have, ECAP will be having its annual Martin Luther King Day celebration. It's breakfast in the morning. That will be at the Reform Church, where it's been for years and years and years. Certainly you'll have, and look, if you haven't gone, you should try it at least one year. It's a tremendous celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King and his legacy. There's performances by community groups. Certainly, we have our elected officials. And this year, and I'm happy to say, we're going to have a keynote speaker, and our keynote speaker is going to be County Executive George Latimer, and then prior Senator Latimer would come practically every year, if not, if not every year. So, we look forward to him being the keynote speaker. So, again, this January fifteenth, Martin Luther King Day at the Reform Church for breakfast. I think we start everything about eight o'clock in the morning.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have nothing to report tonight because I'm not gonna have much more of a voice left anyway, so that'll bring us to our second opportunity to address the board on anything at all tonight. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Jessica Shuffaletti, three thirty-eight Columbus Avenue in Tocco. I was able to read the, the recent article in the New York Times that you mentioned about Tocco, which was great. And Mayor Eklund, in the article, you mentioned that, I don't know your exact wording, but over the next ten years, you would, that Tocco's Marble Dell Road would flourish. And I was just wondering what your plans or vision is for Marble Dell Road in those next ten years?
Well, since I don't own any property on that road, if I did, I'd have a vision for it. But I, I do believe that, and I'm just speculating here, that once the hotel is built out, and then the restaurant gets built out, I've said along, I feel that that's probably gonna be the, you know, catalyst to really make some changes down there. There's property owners down there that are, that are in the process of selling their industrial properties now. So I think that there's just gonna be, not necessarily just because of the hotel, but I think that that whole area of light manufacturing is in the process over, clearly over the next ten years. I would be almost certain that we're gonna see some significant changes, mostly just because of the turnover in the real estate. And anyone who's gonna go ahead and sell their property to somebody else, I don't think they're gonna go ahead and repurpose it in the same manner in which some of those properties have been used over the last hundred years. I just think there's gonna be, you know, new retail, and like I said in the article, new retail. I think it's, you know, it's gonna be a perfect walking corridor, sort of like Columbus Avenue is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sarah Gerice, two oh four Dante Avenue. While we're on the topic of Marble Dell Road, I wanted to inquire about the P sites and if you had any update from the DEC about the testing and any other results that had come in, or any word on the request to keep the community meetings going while that construction is still underway, since it seems they are so behind on what their initial timeline was?
So I'll actually toss that over to David Burke.
I can talk a little bit about the P sites. P site work happened in October and the end of December of this year. I actually have the, what they actually did. So they did eight soil vapor samples, soil vapor samples, ten soil borings, ten new groundwater monitoring wells, two ambient air samples, all collected at that site during that time. We were told today that DEC is starting to receive draft data. And again, as everyone knows, they will not release draft data until it's validated, and oftentimes, it seems like the validated data comes back several months after the draft data. Received no word if DEC has even looked or began to analyze any of this data. However, I'm sure in the next couple of months, they will get into that, and we already have a standing request into them for the validated data. Once they get it in their hands, we'd like it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Nicholas Neighbors, one oh eight Sagamore Road. Good evening, trustees and Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And speaking to the residents, especially those who live close to Main Street and Depot Square like myself, a concern is that traffic seems to be getting worse, especially with the new residents in the Quarry Apartments, the new building that's gone up on one oh, one hundred Main Street, and the visitors that will have potentially, when the hotel is done. I'm curious, has there been a traffic study, a recent traffic study, that will help see if anything could be done about the congestion?
Well, each time a project actually goes through our land use boards, they're required to do a traffic study. So I know they did one, but it's been quite a few years. They did one before they built that project. I'm not sure the most recent traffic study that took into consideration the intersection that you're talking about. I'm, I'm not sure the most recent one that was done. It could very well be that the Quarry Place Traffic Study was the last one, but something tells me, I think the hotel had to do one also. I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. Yeah.
I, I do believe, I, I think, I, I don't recall exactly, but I do think they, they did carry it. I think they carried the Marble Dell and Main Street light. They analyzed that, and I think they did carry it down here.
All the way down to Main and Columbus?
I believe, I believe they did.
Okay.
And that was our BFJ planners.
So we would have that data for you, if you can interpret it. Um, I'm not sure if it's on our website, or, I mean, a traffic study, by the way, is like this thing. Okay, all right.
If, if it's there, it would be, if they did do it, if I, from remembering correctly, it would be in the building departments. You could file FOIL with the building department. They'll get you the, that information, absolutely.
Also, the, the light by the Carvel and the lights that follow, you know, I live right up the block, and it has to be the longest red light I've ever.
I wish Antonio Lee were here tonight, but I'm sure he's home tonight laughing, so. Hi, Antonio. We hear that all the time.
If there's a way to maybe just kind of speed up the rotation of the light.
You know what? We all give an opinion. Well, not an opinion, we all explain this, but the chief has the best explanation, because our explanation, he's in charge of, of traffic, so I'm gonna call him on the carpet here, just to ask him to come up. There is, there is an, an answer to this question that you and thousands before you have asked, so.
I'm definitely not going to.
Yeah.
Not a new question.
So, I, I'm thinking that Antonio is so happy to be on this conversation, because I have it with him weekly. So, so hopefully the, it's not a, it's probably not what you want to hear, and it's not certainly, it's not a quick answer. So, so, Westchester County's maybe about eight or ten years ago, conducted a very lengthy and detailed study about the whole traffic corridor on Main Street. So, what they looked at, and it was, it was the EPA that funded this study. It was all throughout Westchester County, some of the more congested intersections, to try to alleviate air pollution. And so, it was, traffic engineers did studies, they created computer modules, trying to increase the timing of, of the lights, so that not only Main Street and Depot Square in Columbus, as well as Lake Avenue and Main Street, but Cameron, all the way up to Winter Hill Road. And what they found at that time, it was one or two seconds that they were able to tweak the lights to try to speed it up. Because of the, the way that those intersections are configured, that particular signal is actually works in tandem with Lake Avenue. The only way that we could possibly speed it up would to eliminate what they call an exclusive pedestrian signal. So right now, senior citizen, a young person, teenager, goes and presses the button, wants to cross Main Street from the Columbus Avenue side to Carvel, for instance. If they press the button and they wait for it to cycle out, all four intersections comes to a complete stop. And it's the safest way to address the pedestrians crossing. The only way to speed up the intersection, and again, it wasn't just me, it was, it was engineers, it was computer modules trying to figure this out, is to eliminate the exclusive pedestrian signals. In other words, you, it'd be like New York City, where if east-west traffic was green, you would allow for pedestrian traffic to cross opposite the light. That's the only way to address that particular intersection, which is a tremendous trade-off for pedestrian safety. So, that's the balancing act that, that my, when I make a recommendation to the village board, when traffic engineers look at it, and ultimately, when the village board decides, do they make that trade-off with pedestrian safety, with trying to get people, you know, on their way for vehicular traffic? That's the problem. That's the question that we always look at, that we try to address. I know that with some of the developments, including the hotel, and even prior to that, some of the Main Street developments, there was some seed money to go towards the traffic signalization, to see if it needed improvements or studies. I know there was something that we all discussed, maybe it was time to bring in a traffic engineer, take another fresh look at it. You know, maybe some new technologies have come about in, in the years since the county did it several years ago, but those are the problems, not easy solutions. And then ultimately, is there a trade-off with pedestrian safety?
Thank you, Chief. So, kind of what it comes down to is that if we were to turn around and let's say just put a garbage bag over the walk-don't-walk boxes and put duct tape around the buttons, so nobody can go ahead and basically manually change the traffic signal, and like the chief said, make it just like New York City. The chief feels, and, you know, we respect his opinion, that that would compromise public safety, that potentially, somebody may get injured because of the fact that maybe it's something that's, you know, it's a new change, or maybe there just isn't enough time for that senior or whoever it is to actually make it across the street. Somebody may get injured. So, we have the safest system, but it takes, it places the burden on all this traffic waiting for the light to change. So, you know, that's what we've always been challenged with. Do we say, you know what, you know, let's just do what New York City is doing, but then who wants to take the phone call that, you know what, my six-year-old kid was riding his bicycle across the street and got clipped by a car, you know? So that, that's, in essence, what we've been dealing with. But, thanks for asking the question. Anybody else wish to address the board? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Omira Andino at fourteen Westview Avenue. And I've lived in Tocco for nearly seven years. Recently purchased my co-op at the Gentry a couple of years ago, and as Mr. Neighbors noted, I'm seeing the increase in traffic, one of the issues. But the other issue that I'm hearing, that I'm experiencing, but I'm also hearing from neighbors, is the issue of traffic tickets, and how quickly someone can get a ticket after the time has expired, specifically the meters. Well, I'm wondering, and others have suggested, is there a possibility of a grace period when issuing the tickets, before issuing the ticket and the time is up on meters?
Um, you're talking about the regular meters in front of a barber shop or something like that? Again, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask the chief. He, sorry, chief. Should have decided you sit in the front row tonight, so.
I could address that also.
Or maybe Gary could, well, Gary's the one you go to when you get the ticket. The chief is the one who, who manages the meters, so we'll let the two of them handle this.
So, when, when the meters expire, and I think, when the meters expire, the officer comes by, and they don't know how long it's been expired for, so they don't know if it's been expired for a minute, ten minutes, five minutes. So, it's expired, so they, I don't know. Okay. But if it's expired, it's expired.
I understand that.
But most of the time.
Is that something that we could consider in good faith for the residents and for?
But again, how do, how do you implement that? If an officer's coming around, sees an expired meter, he's just not waiting there, he's just driving around, sees an expired meter, how do you, how do you implement a five-minute grace period? You don't, you can't. I don't see, you know, how would an officer know that it's been five minutes?
I think the counsel answered that perfectly, that there, there may be times where somebody has the perception that a parking enforcement officer is waiting specifically, watching this clock and waiting, and the truth of the matter is, is one officer, one parking enforcement officer for the whole village at any given time. So it's impossible, I know that, I've gotten parking tickets, I know the frustration, I know the feeling is, is that, that, you know, they're, they're birds of prey waiting to pounce. But the truth of the matter is, it's one person enforcing the whole village, and not just meters. That same person is also checking for overtime in residential areas. So, let's just use Depot Square as an example. They may hit Depot Square at, say, ten AM, just for argument's sake. The reality is, it'd be impossible for that person to come back to that area, at best, an hour and a half, two hours after the last time you saw him, because he's other, has other areas of responsibility. So, trust me, I, I've gotten tickets, I know the frustration, I know the, there's a feeling, a perception that our people just can't wait to go there. But as, as the attorney said, is that the officer really has no way of knowing when that meter expires. All that person sees is the red flag. Now, with all that being said, the only good thing is, is, and maybe this is a saving grace to, to not only our merchants and our, our residents and, and people who shop in the villages, that very recently, within the last month or so, we went to a system that you could pay by phone. It's called Pangol. So, if you're running late, you, you went and, you know, went to a salon, or were having lunch, and your, you know, your lunch date went beyond the hour that you put quarters or time into your meter, you have the ability to extend that time on your phone. And so, maybe that helps. It's not a perfect scenario, it's not, but the truth of the matter is, our P, our parking enforcement officers are not waiting to pounce on, on, on residents, and, because it's bad for commerce, and we all get that. But the flip side is, is that our merchants are relying on turnover in those spaces. So in other words, if there's not a turnover, if somebody went in and, and spent an extended period of time at a meter, maybe took a train, went to see a show, that meter's occupied all day long, where there's not a turnover, somebody can't run in and get a cup of coffee, buy a newspaper, if anyone's buying a newspaper these days, but, you know, shop in our, in our, in our business district. So, again, everything we do is always a trade-off, there's always why we do things, and, and it is to promote business. It's not, it's not to hurt our businesses, and so, that's, that's the answer.
Thank you, Chief. See, I always bring him up because he's got the good answers. It's funny, I didn't think we had that reputation. I knew that Bronxville did. I remember Hungry Helen years ago was the traffic maid, so.
I think we're all really excited about the Pangol, that it's come in, and that it's throughout the whole village now, because it really does make adding that extra fifteen minutes so much easier.
Mm-hmm.
But with that system, do the officers have the ability to look and see, oh, this meter expired at twelve thirty-two, and right now it's twelve thirty-four, so maybe I'll give this person another three or four minutes to get back to their car or re-up their meter with, before I give them a ticket?
Yeah, I don't know if it has that capacity. It does. Okay.
But that could, I mean, that is, if they can check and they can see, this is only two minutes over, maybe I'll, you know, a lot of municipalities have that ability to say, you know, we'll give them six minutes. And if they're, haven't re-upped their meter or come back within that six minutes, then sorry, that was your grace period. It would be a nice thing to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. How are you, Chris?
I'm well.
Good.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Christie Giorgio, fifty Columbus Avenue. So, just to piggyback what they said, I know, for example, White Plains has a six-minute grace period, and they, and, and there's a countdown on that six minutes on the meter. So, for example, if I'm two minutes late, I'll say minus four, and it's still giving you a grace period. So, I think the meters that we have probably could do that as well, because they look at the same type of meters that White Plains has. There are, you know, the other meters that White Plains has too, but that's the thing. Question on ninety-nine Main Street, were there any back taxes as well?
No. You know, the funny thing is, the odd history on that was they paid their taxes, and I think they knew that if they didn't pay their taxes, we would have resolved this issue fourteen years ago. But because they paid their taxes, it kind of kept the property just in a state of, you know, we, we as a municipality, we had very little recourse against them. You know, we, we go, we pour through the village code to see, all right, what can we do to stop this person from just poking a thumb in the village's eye? Remember, they painted the building purple for a while. They, they did a whole bunch of odd and bizarre things, I felt. But to answer your question, no, they pay the taxes every year.
Okay, well, at least that's something. Also, I'm sorry, chief, you, I have two questions on traffic.
Glad the chief stuck around tonight.
So, what is the thinking behind having thirty-minute meters in Crestwood? And why, I understand the rapid turnover, but when you consider Martines, when you consider the, the bar, and you consider across the street, that pure shake place, you know, people are sitting there and they're really rushing. I, I know I like to go to Stevens Greens for lunch, and I'm like, I'm like having to pump the I, I know I like to go to Stevens Greens for lunch, and I'm like, I'm like having to pump the meter at 30 minutes. I, I mean, I'm a pretty quick eater, but even so, I think 30 minutes is kind of hard with regard to the street parking. And then when I try to go into the other parking lot that might have longer meter times, it's always packed there. So I, so I was just wondering if that could go to an hour versus a half an hour?
Yeah, they're Pango now, almost, every, every meter in the village is Pango now, right, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's Pango, I understand. I do have Pango, but I haven't figured it out yet, I'm sorry to say.
So, so in Crestwood, and actually Depot Square, I think the only two spots in the whole village that there are some 30-minute meters, there are only, and I'm not 100% certain, because I, but my recollection is, is that there are four 30-minute meters on Fisher, and four on Columbus closest, so, so closest to the Chinese Takeout Place, closest to Crestwood, Crestwood Pizza, and the two from the liquor store, that's on Columbus Avenue. And then on both sides of Fisher, I think there's only two in front, starting from the, um, might be three, from the liquor store up to Martine's or 30 Minutes on both sides of the street. And then the rest are two-hour meters. And, and the reason for that is, the merchants asked us for that. Because, again, when American Bistro, and I don't want to name names, but one of the more successful restaurants back in the day, and I, it was a good thing, they were filling up and having a really great lunch crowd, they were starving out the little stores that needed that turnover to run in, get a cup of coffee, get a slice of pizza, get a Chinese takeout. So, they asked us for the shorter-term meters for that particular use. And again, it's, it's not all the way up Fisher, it's only three or four on both sides of the street, specifically for the businesses that we identified that really needed that turnover less than the two hours. So, that's the answer.
Good, very logical answer, thank you.
Chief, I have another time. Sorry about that. I want to preface this by just saying, my grandparents lived in Brooklyn. And my, and my father always said to me, never make a full stop in Brooklyn, because you're gonna get clipped. Because the problem is, you not only have to stop, but then you have to creep yourself out, so that, you know, another oncoming traffic will do that. And part of the problem with Brooklyn is there were always all these double-parked cars, and, you know, you couldn't see. I bring this up because I am really disturbed about Elm and Yonkers Avenue. I recently got a traffic ticket there, and I will be perfectly honest with all of you about that. So if people aren't figuring out where this intersection is, it's where Pyramid Fitness is, and the, what, it used to be the casino, I forgot.
Parkway Casino. Yeah, Parkway.
Parkway Casino. And when you get off of Bronx River Parkway and you're driving on Elm Street, and the sightline there with Yonkers Avenue is just not even. And so, the problem is, you do have to kind of creep over, and you are going beyond the stop sign. So I got ticketed, I understand that, but I really think something needs to be done on that intersection.
Isn't the stop sign right at Yonkers Avenue?
No. It's kind of, it's a weird, it's.
Because they have their whole parking lot there.
Yeah, it's a very weird si- situation. So, all I'm saying is, before they, I know they put a cop there. I've seen it a number of times. I've decided I'm not ever going there if I can help it. But even so, I still think it's not a fair situation, or a fair fight for the, for the car, for the, for the driver, because the.
Let me see if I can get this straight. So I come off the BRP, and I make the, on Elm, and I kind of make the left onto Elm.
Right.
And the Parkway Casino's on my right-hand side.
Right.
And there's the driveway where you could drive in front of the building, and then there's their big parking lot. Isn't this stop sign like right up at the corner of Yonkers Avenue?
But then you have Yonkers here, you have Elm kind of here, and it's, it's hard for me to describe it, but you need about another 10 feet, 15 feet, for them to align with one another.
I never noticed that, okay.
So, I, I just think.
Chris, you're right. I've noticed it, you're right.
Alright, and I, I just, I'm just saying to you, chief, I don't think it's a fair ticket. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Bring that up to Gary when you come to court.
Yeah, well, I, I wrote the $100, $150 ticket, I, I was, you know, I said, it's, it's my charity to the village fund.
Thank you.
One other thing, and I know I've never done this before, but I, I, I think it's a civic service, and I, and I would encourage you to do the same thing. We've never announced the caucuses at these meetings, but I think it's very important. So I'm just gonna say that where the Democrats are having their caucus on January 30, at the Community Center at 7:30, and I would encourage you to announce the Republican and, and the conservatives and all the others. Because, you know, we, it's, it's a shame, we get, you know, 10 people, 15 people, 20 people at these caucuses, and, you know, it's just, it's bringing our new leadership, you know, and, and having our democracy. So I, I think, I, I'm saying as the Democratic leader, just to say that we're having our caucus then, and I would encourage you guys to announce it for the Republicans too.
Fair enough. That's what the meeting is for, thank you.
Hello, Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe, New York. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
And Mr. DeMarco, I want to thank the people that work at DPW, they do a good job. I live on Chestnut, and that hill is a tough hill, so they do a great job, appreciate that. Couple of things, one is, the, the parking situation is an interesting scenario. I think it's good that we're having parking problems, that means people are coming here, so that's a good thing. I, I don't know about, Gary, about the Pango, Pongo, whatever the heck it's called, but I did go to White Plains, I got a ticket, I actually got out of it. But they had a lot of problems with people coming up, saying that they, they had done that on the phone, and that they got a ticket anyways. So there were some issues, it might be with their system, in, in White Plains in particular, but there were some issues with the, the fact that they paid, but then the meter people didn't, didn't see it. So the judge was letting a lot of people go, because they actually had the ticket there to prove that they had actually paid. So it's just something to, to consider.
We watch out for it, I haven't received any of those complaints yet, which is good, because this has been in effect for a little bit.
Means it's working.
So it means it's working, so.
Which is good.
Knock on wood, I think we're okay.
What, another point with the parking goes, and this kind of goes along the line of revenue to the, to the village. I believe after property taxes, the second line of revenue is, you know, tickets and things of that nature. What a goal I think in 2018 should be, and hopefully beyond, is to try to minimize, you know, minimize that, so sales tax revenue is higher than that. And I think maybe looking at the overall economic development of the village, one of the ideas would be, how do we make it as parking-friendly as possible? And that might be something we can all think about.
Um, you know, it's funny, you mentioned that. It's not that the fines are the second highest, it's actually the parking fees are.
Parking tickets, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, it's not that, yeah, the tickets are not what's the second revenue producer. It's actually all the quarters and the lot fees that we charge, that's the, the big revenue producer.
Okay, alright, well, that's good then.
So, and, and I say all the time, you know, being, you know, sitting, working for the village now for as long as I have, all small villages, you're in the parking business, like it or not. So if you can buy property and build, you know, some parking spaces, like we did right behind here, first year was here. We built this little camera place parking lot, we paid for it in just a couple of years. So, that's the reality. When you're in a small municipality, where you have two train stations and a nice little strong commercial base, you're, you're in the parking, not ticket business, but the parking revenue business, you know?
Well, maybe the, one of the P sites then can become a parking lot, the one that has all the parking there now anyways. The other issue I have is, I, I was at an event in December, it was about the environment, okay? And what this woman said was, she called, she used the word radical transparency, and I like that for many reasons. But I think going forward, and especially with the P sites, we need to have radical transparency. And what I mean by that is, is that I think we need to marshal the resources of, for example, the history committee, residents, businesses, although they may be a little hesitant to do that. Any paperwork that officials have at the county level to find out exactly who dumped in there. Not about passing judgment on why they dumped there, but who dumped there. Because if we know, we know that Revlon did, Borough's Welcome also did, I actually have some paperwork that talks about Borough's Welcome actually dumping in there. So, we need to find out who dumped in there. I don't know about passing judgment, it was, that happened then, but the more we find, the more businesses like Revlon, if there are PCBs in there, it's most likely Con Ed maybe dumped some transformers in there. Maybe New York Tel did too. If they did, and they can find it, and my next point is, not just drilling little test wells, I'm talking about tenting, digging, tenting, and venting, and doing like an archaeological thing. Especially on the southern side, because the northern side is problematic with all those businesses there. But I think it makes sense to at least approach the DEC on that and say, look, guys, we know what the deal is here. Just putting a little pipe in and doing an air sample may tell us what the chemicals are, but if we can find out, you know, a, a piece of machinery that has a name on it or something like that, that would be a huge deal for us. It'd be a huge, because, you know, let's face it, we know what the DEC's goal is now, they're, they're going to look for responsible parties. So I think that's something that, that, you know, as a group, as a village, regardless of party, whether it's the Dems or the Tucko independents or the Republicans, we can all work together on that, because it really isn't the benefit of everyone. It's got nothing to do with the brownfield. This is everything to do with trying to minimize our costs. We got issues with our, our friends in Washington with the whole tax thing, and we have to, you know, who cares? Maybe we get a windfall, and maybe Revlon could give bonuses for everybody. But I think it's something that makes sense to do as, as a group, as, as a village. And we know enough now that, for example, when the pressure is low, when the air pressure is, is low, you can get the vapors, you can get more, better results on the vapors. When the pressure's high, the vapors are pushed down. So, if the DEC does tests and it's a high-pressure day, we're really not gonna get the kind of results we want. So, I don't know if you know this, but they had to go back to Verizon twice. Because the first time they went to Verizon, this is Aztec that works the DEC, the, all the doors and the windows were open, and the vents were on. And they didn't get a good reading, so they had to go back again. And then on 11 Verdi last year, they had to go back twice, because the first time, they drilled their, the, the hole for the test, and it was on a sort of a sub thing, it wasn't on the bottom. So, Aztec has issues. So my point is, is that we just need to be very careful and, and watch what they do, but really push for what we need and our own interests. I think there's enough intelligence between the consultants we have, between the village residents that have studied this, you guys now know a lot more than you did two years ago, that we can sort of tell the DEC a few things that we couldn't probably have done in the past. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I think it's an issue. And, and also, I wanted to ask people who are watching this, I think it's important to get involved, I agree with Chris. So I hope everybody will vote. The other thing is, I, I wanted to let you know that myself, and I believe Sarah's husband, are gonna volunteer at ECAP and work with the kids on teaching them resume skills and interview skills. Because I think our high school students are not getting taught that, life skills. And so, they're our farm team, for our employers. So I'm gonna encourage the Chamber and other business, local businesses to do that, and try to help our kids get those skills. And even the college students here too, maybe volunteer for Concordia. But I'd like to see all, all the businesses do that, a nonpartisan thing, and maybe the Chamber can be a leader in that. I'm gonna talk to them about doing that, so.
Good, yeah, their office is here too.
Right here, yeah, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
I'm sure, I'm sure ECAP would, would welcome your help. They have a program already in place, but more the merrier.
That's what he said, so I'd like to be, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, well, with that, apologize, we have such a thin board here tonight, but, boy, it seems everyone you talk to has got a cold or some kind of illness. So I hope everyone is well in our community, and with there being no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. And do I have a second for that?
So moved.
This meeting is now adjourned. Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a very good evening.